I know.
Alright, so I'll call the planning and zoning commission meeting to order. First item is a phone call. How's on here?
Here.
See for check here. And, no Kevin. So we have all our regular members here, so we have. Next item is approval of minutes of previous meetings. I'll entertain a motion to approve the meetings in December 13th.
A motion to approve the meeting of December 13th.
So second, second, second. Does anyone have any corrections? We, yes. None, who has any? And then we'll hold on the motion to approve the minutes of December 13th that's written. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. And we have December 19th, special meeting minutes, so entertain the motion. So moved. Who's got it? So, so, so. Are you going to second it?
I shall.
It's moved in second. Does anyone have any corrections to the meeting minutes?
I have one thing. To the first paragraph. Fourth line, where it says the largest onsite data center is 12,000 square feet. I think it was slightly under that, it was 11,000.
11,000, I think it was.
Was, yeah.
Eleven eight.
Alright, less than 12.
Okay, great. Okay, thanks.
And I have one item at the top. It's a special meeting, not a regular meeting.
Thank you.
I almost never read that. I didn't know which one was which. Does anyone have any other corrections? I will vote on them. Provo of the will be minutes from December 19th as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And the motion is carried unanimously. And because we have people here from the Mystic Seaport, I'd rather have them wait till the end of the meeting. I'd like to change the agenda and have them make their presentation now. It's under referrals. It's going to, the first, most important thing. Talk to the applicant. I'd like to make a, make a representation, state your name. Will you represent?
And I apologize, this is Kevin Fiftel just joining.
Well, while you're down for talk.
Thank you, didn't mean it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for accommodating us. My name is John Casey, I'm a partner with the law firm Robinson &amp; Cole. We represent the Mystic Seaport Museum. And we're happy to be here tonight on the referral for our proposal to amend the Maritime Heritage District Master Plan for the seaport. And also site plan approved. Tonight is Chad Frost from Kenton Frost, the project landscape architect, and Ken Wilson, the director of facilities from Mystic Seaport Museum. Our architect, Mark Mo isn't here, but I don't know. Architecture is kind of a little beyond. We'll tell you a little bit about it, it's beyond the referral. Just a brief reminder, so the the MHD district is a special district in Stonington that encompasses the seaport property. It was created in 2005 to specifically cover that property to allow flexibility in the operations and the exhibits at the seaport. Rather, in the past, they were just simply zoned as residential land. They were obviously often, if not completely out of conformance or with the regs. So the master plan evolves over time. This is actually the eighth amendment to the master plan. We've been here recently in the summer 2019 and the spring of 2020 to tell you about the replacement of Latitude 41 Restaurant with the new Delmar Hotel, which should be breaking ground this spring. And so most of these projects, most of the master plan amendments are a series of mostly minor approved changes that just sort of build up over time that are needed at the, at the museum to sort of keep things moving, make appropriate adjustments to the property. So there's actually 15 projects on this. And to go through them, I will turn it over to Chad Frost. Go through them, then we can answer any questions that we have.
And the camera will pick it up.
See what I'm doing over here. So.
Alright, so good evening.
Issues, and so our, I would like a picture of them, so, thanks, sorry.
There we go. Um, so. So I'll run through the, the projects really quickly. Most of them.
Sit down.
Yeah. Alright, I'll just be laughing. Uh, so, thank you for bumping us up. Uh, 15 projects, my opinion, as a resident in Grattan, I don't think many of them are very visible from this side of the river, but because the project is within 500 feet of the boundary, that's why it's referral, so you guys get to see it. And as John mentioned, we've been here, do this, so that you guys can see what's going on. Look through them. Project number one is the ball, and is the Rossi Mill Building here in 2019. What's called Boat Hall Hall, inside of here, at that point, it was in disorientation. And we're now basically taking, it was 33,000, 5,000 square feet, so it's slightly different configuration. We're, we're better public access, we're putting in a new entryway and a lift from the, the ground up out here at the corner, so that there's a more present, pedestrian presence out on the street. So that is. Uh, so that was project number one, which is basically, we're calling it a relocation of the in the. Temporary banners on the, so if you've driven by and seen the Tom Sullivan, which is the newer Woodville banners out there that advertise the exhibits going on, want to be able to do the same thing on the corner of the Rossi Mill and that area, and that is permissible, and they've been regulations, we just have to call them out, complete everything, that's why included here. Uh, not visible from Grattan, but has to be included. Project number three is temporary restroom, so it's like a stillman building. And as John alluded to, Delmar Hotel goes under construction, which is starting right about now. There are currently public restrooms associated with building. We'll go back in the Delmar Hotel when it's built. However, during construction, they're unavailable. So we're putting in these temporary restrooms out here. The bodies of the space. It'll be the, the public restrooms while the Delmar's, and they will go away. Before is membership patio improvement, so this is the membership building. There's a square back there. It's just all the blue stones upheaved all over the old, kind of a covering, all that. Just people has that are covering, it's more welcoming, a private space that members only can, can enjoy when they're on campus. Number five, this is the that is currently right here, picking up and moving it right there. Um, but because it's a change, literally every single big change we make on campus has to go through this master plan process, so it's picked up and moved. If you paid attention, it's already been. Um, and some of these, you'll see, that have already happened, we get kind of administrative approval and update the master. Reflect, project number six is an ADA ramp. Uh, print shop. Project seven is an ADA ramp into the toy boat bill. Project eight, uh, the youth, so this is kind of like low ropes. Uh, everything's ground based, and that's where if they have groups of kids coming in, school age kids, uh, and exercises and things like that, that's back behind. These are the buildings on Route 27, the historic houses. And these are the kind of the on-campus buildings you walk by, so it's this backyard of all the buildings. You can see it from any public access. Building with, um, and it's just a uh, project. Now, this is a, a new water taxi location, so, um, the people has been working with the town, been quite a bit to try to help alleviate traffic, and actually vehicular traffic until the next couple of projects. Sure about. Um, this is for a walk, we'll go from the seaport down and back again. You don't have to pay right through, pay to go downtown and come back again. Uh, you can also have you do that back to the downtown that way as well. Um, but we think that'll be a great compliment to be able to. Get, project number 10. A couple of days ago, the Dutton was lifted out of the water and placed. There are, it was done, but there were a couple of wood sheds, wood storage sheds that were there, had to be removed, had to put in a concrete pad. Uh, and to be there under restoration for a couple of years. Basically, they do have a lift, um, and they have, this area here is all occupied with ships under construction right now, so the, the ship is really now, and they needed an extra space at restoration. Project 11 is, uh, the ingress and dress, the main visitor come in and out of campus. Uh, we could basically reconfigure the stay as you come on the campus. And then as you leave, you used to come up and here, and kind of just leave right out. Now we have you come down through here, go up, new ramps, and go through the gift shop. Before you, because visitor experience, that's um, and so that was a reconfiguring, entering and exit experience, already directed. Uh, problem, this is, this is kind of, this is picnic. Um, if you can imagine that, but during COVID, the owner and operator, the coffee shop right there, from large picnic tables, resident complained because they thought they increased the numbers, there were more picnic tables out there, and we just have to document, it's actually a decrease in seats. Um, but we had the numbers in there, it all has to just track up. Um, anyways, picnic tables is number 12. Number 13 on this is a pocket park. So this is a very southernly end museum grounds, you probably don't know it if you're driving, because you've gone by kind of the gift shop, the parking lot, a couple of how, at the very corner is a little empty lot. Down at the flagpole, where there's a little pocket park there with the anchor, and now the new fish cultures. Like that, corner that kind of anchors the southern end of campus. Um, and as part of that, where you can come down here, we're working with the town of Stonington to do a new sidewalk, going a straightaway along Bay Street. And so that pocket park kind of acts as the anchor. Uh, ability that being entrance, we can have a couple of signs as wayfinding to get you to that point. Yeah, you can get people parking and then walk downtown, opposed to drive downtown. And then project 14 goes along with that. That is the southern half of the parking lot of the South Block has been converted into parking for downtown. So there's a shuttle where you can come in, you do not have to go to the seaport, you can park, you pay your couple dollars, I don't know, the shuttle takes you down to East Bickery, and you get off, and you're downtown, and move the shuttle back again. Uh, so it can alleviate in traffic back and forth on the road, and getting people in alternative transportation. And then project 15, the last one, is a simple one, but it's a portion of the mill. Uh, that would, and Rossi is a very large building. The years have been replacing different pieces as we go, and so this is a replacement now. And with that. Those looking, any questions?
Anyone have questions?
One, one little question about the water taxi people do, but how are you going to pose that if people have to come, want to get to the water taxi?
So that's locating it right here. Uh, the, I park here in the, the South Block, across the street and across walk. Come behind the gift shop, there's, and a gate back here. All the operators, the people will queue here, but as the shuttle comes in, the captain or the mate can get off, come up through, make sure they're kind of ticketed and paid, you show that you paid, and then the shuttle is probably free with your paid part. Right, and then you get on and you come back.
Process people in the parking lots. Interesting.
Yeah, or if you pay per admission, and you want to be present.
And coming back, what people are being dumped off?
On campus, and we have first ones get out of campus, and other ones don't. Um, that will be one of those operational things that we will figure out.
Uh, I guess the water taxis, they're, it's just gonna go to the stomach of the.
At this point, yeah, they'll confirm me exactly where it lands down at downtown. And then the negotiations with a couple of different, I'll say dock owners down there.
Same buses, number four, two, three, four.
Uh, the shuttle has a parking place, it ran this summer. Um, and so we scraped off of, and was one parallel, so we gave up.
No, I mean, it's just not going into Grattan.
Correct, yeah, correct. And primarily, honestly, it's about times, lap times, in order to make that full intersection because of kind of there and traffic going over, the bridge goes up. Was to get in and around quickly and pack it in congestion.
Questions?
Vincent, perfect, thank you.
So, so long, what's up, because you're here.
What's up with the hotel? It's kind of one silent here.
Uh, it was silent for the two years, uh, kind of their hotel operator, and it shut a lot of hotels down, and so they, they took some time to make sure everything was going. Uh, we are currently out to bid for construction for the hotel itself. The Latitude's restaurant is in the process of, parts of it are being removed as we speak. Uh, and demolition starts March 15th.
Have we seen the, the final on that? Because this board had some comments onto that hotel, and we don't know what happened to that.
Uh, they were incorporated into the final approval. As, as we went through that whole process, that, just the last meeting before COCO.
But you're saying demolition started, so the, so the design is 100% complete?
The design is 100%.
It's available online someplace?
Uh, it was probably available online through Stonington's approval stuff, I mean. Yes, it's out there publicly. Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright. Well, let's take our action on, on the, in the order of the agenda. The next item is public communications, is anyone on the commission? Communications. I received a letter, and I think it was sent to everybody from RX Planning Commission member Dick Fitzgerald. On that item, most of these access things, I think, were part of the rules for site plans or something like that, should the zoning official try to take a look at this and see if this can be enforced by zoning?
So, so a number of, most of those public access points, yes, were part of site plans. Okay, some of them had, in their easements, some of them had the ability to be signed. Some did not. Um, Public Works actually routinely goes through downtown Mystic and replaces signs that are worn and, or lost. So some of those signs that Mr. Fitzgerald reported, um, you know, have been replaced. Some of them may not have been there to begin with. Um, and a couple that he's really interested in, in signing. We, we don't have easements, and we don't have the rights to put up a sign, which is not to say that we won't get that next time a site plan comes in for those particular properties.
Well, we don't have any cases where it was on a site plan, that.
No, no, every single one, every single one that is on a site plan is out there.
From the town, and respond to Dick on this?
Um, we've met with him a number of times.
Oh.
Yes.
It's hard to understand what his statements mean.
Yeah, I, I think he, you know, uses his original letter and then updates it as he.
But it's not clear, it's the whole.
Right.
What it is.
Right.
I just. That original letter, it's got to be 10 years old. So I remember that. Written in parchment. On display at the Mystic Seaport. Is it, the staff have any?
Right, that I think you all received in your packet.
The following thing is.
Right, regarding data centers, yeah. I, I mean, I have one thing, but I'll bring it up under report of staff. I, I have correspondence from Desegregate Connecticut who wants to do a presentation, so.
Okay, it doesn't have anything that affects our.
No, no.
So anyone in the public wish to address the commission tonight? Yes, if you want to step up to the podium, say your name and address.
Yes, Sandy Scott, 191 Peoplehead Avenue, Mystic. Um, I noticed that you were going to talk about auxiliary buildings tonight? And changing their size, is that correct?
What do you mean, play exit? Oh, you mean the auxiliary?
Yes.
To be in a conformance of the state statute.
And I just want to promote the idea of making it 1,000 square feet. We're trying to think about our future and, uh, build a, an auxiliary building on our property. And 800 square feet is very, very small. We'd like to make the building ADA accessible for later years. We don't need it now, but we're thinking ahead. We'd also like two bedrooms, two baths, so someone has to stay with us for care, they'd have their own space. So we can only do that if it's 1,000 square feet. That's all. Thank you.
Anyone else on the speakers? We're just quiet tonight, okay? Sitting on the other side. Alright, uh, next item then is, uh, our old business zoning regulation amendments.
So, so Tabitha's going to share her screen so that, um, everybody can see what was in your packet. This is, she's done some, that's right, okay, you've got to get promoted, sorry. So we've made some revisions based on our discussion, um, in October, I believe. Um, and we'll go over those.
So shall we roll right into one and see if there are comments?
Right, right.
Each one, I don't want to wait till the end.
Exactly, so when she calls it up, um, we'll kind of go through it. Um, with the accessory dwelling unit, when we get to that, um, there were no changes, so I'm just hoping you guys are good with it, and we can submit an application.
Well, on that, we don't have a choice unless we opt out.
Which we're beyond the opt out.
Yeah, so it's really just bringing our.
Just bringing, yes, exactly.
Okay, so as Deb said, um, this brings up some of the things we worked on in October, and a couple of new things, so the parking requirements, we have new definitions, they're level two charging, direct current fast charging station, made ready. Those have all been included for the new, um, legislation.
And we're gonna go through them in order.
Yep.
Well, they're not in the order that they were on the agenda.
That wasn't on our.
Yes, it was later on.
Later on, yeah, it's later on, okay.
Later on in the regs.
Okay, so the first one is, um, changed in storage requirements for multi-unit dwellings. And this came out of discussion with all of you, where we talked about size requirements for kayak and bike. And it was decided that we wanted to be a little bit more general about it, so it says here, the phrasing has been changed to at least 50% of the multi-unit dwellings will be provided with a long-term storage area, and added for prevention to house large recreational events such as a 12-foot kayak or vehicle. The storage should be easily accessible to the common onsite storage area in our larger facilities will be provided with individual units or on the common onsite facility.
We have a couple comments on this. On the term e-bike, I think that should be replaced with bicycle. Because it doesn't make any difference, whether it's a bike, it's an electric motor or not. And also the term bike, things should be avoided, because some people refer to motorcycles as bikes. And we really need a bicycle.
I, I, um, I thought that same thing when I read it, but then I also noticed that they had eliminated the electrical outlet in the space. And I thought, and, and, and I don't know, but I assumed that, that they wrote e-bike so that in order to accommodate a bicycle, you, an e-bike, you would have to have the outlet. Was there any thought to that? Was that why e-bike was put in there, or was it put in there?
I think it was put in there, because that's what the terms for, or we were using that as discussion.
Honestly, I think it was a holdover from the earlier discussion.
Yeah, because I mean, an e-bike is no different size-wise.
Yeah, that's why.
So, since we did take out, um, we just said it should be easily accessible to storage. It doesn't say anything about outlets.
Well, I'm a little, would be concerned about putting a 110 supply in there anyway, because they've had a lot of fires.
Yeah, well, that, that, and, uh, you know, that would be covered by the building code anyway. If it required an outlet, the building code would say it needed one. If it didn't require it, it wasn't safe in that place, the building code would tell us that. I think, I agree.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think.
Not for us to decide, if it's safe or not.
Yeah, I don't think zoning should just, you know, define electrical code.
Correct, however. They need to be plugged in. They're not gonna take them up to the apartment to plug them in.
Unless, unless you provide some other space.
Can you remove that, I'm not familiar with, can you remove the battery and take the battery upstairs?
Some, yes, some, some no.
Okay.
Yeah. I own one that you, you can.
Got it.
So, having the, the outlet provided in the unit seems valid to me, unless there's some issue with the fire code, which is.
Well, that's not a fire code, well, I mean, they may say you don't, you can't charge.
They might.
Yeah.
So maybe you can use should, you know, these units should have, it's not a must, it's not a shall.
We may want the power supply in there for lights or for some other reason.
Well, we're talking about inside the storage.
That's what I meant, yeah.
I hate using should or should, because then it's, well, don't want to, so it's, it's just too, too vague. But if there's a caveat that we can just put in there saying shall, unless. If allowed. If, if permitted by, by.
Or are people just going to get a long extension cord and run it in there?
Well, you don't want that. Easy to do, you want to provide something that's probably going to be normal in a decade, people imagine if we ever had a time when we didn't. So I would, I would prefer saying have to put it in unless it's not recruited, but as permitted by electrical and building codes.
I'd just be surprised they'd allow that many outlets, you know, because it's with that, with all the units you have and so. When you hear about fires and this, that, you have a variety of equipment in there, some there and those.
Well, they would probably, something like that, I mean, depending on its location, it might be a GF CI or. It would absolutely be GF CI, but, but beyond that.
The problem is a battery sometimes.
You may say that, but I, I kind of looked that one up and yes, it's a real problem and the number of fires with gas equipment. Is hundreds of times more, hundreds of times more, so this is a tiny little problem.
Sure.
That's the, if the other codes, I think we should require it.
Yeah, I mean, I do too, not just for e-bike, but there's so many things you need to charge now and it's just growing.
Absolutely.
Tools of choice or some more batteries.
Well, then that's less gas, more and more.
Yeah, but then it ought to apply to all your storage areas.
Well, this is our.
Well, this should be for.
This is our.
No, I thought this will allow. Areas have the larger storage area for equipment, but not all of them.
Right, 50%.
I mean, 50%. Understand some of that might be market driven.
Yes. Oh, no, I think it would be.
If I can't get a place to plug in my bike, I don't want to rent a place in here. Well, yeah, but.
Or you would, that might be the condition that you lease it on, be to have a place to charge and maybe put it in just. Yeah, because it can't be that expensive to put one in.
So long as you've provided for it, no.
Yeah, correct.
Well, then you're going to have a few extra circuits too. I suppose, you have a couple, so you're going to have to.
All right, so it's allowed by building and fire code. They shall, okay.
Shall.
Yep.
Okay with it? Got trucks all around and I'm good.
Right.
Well, that's the concern, right, is that if there's a fire issue. Uh, but that's. That would be a fire code. Yeah, that's it. I don't want to put something on a burden on someone and then it can't.
No, never, never underestimate the power of people being stupid like plugging in electric heaters or something where they should.
Can't stop that.
Well, if they don't have power, they wouldn't do it.
Nothing's foolproof, most fools are so.
They run the extension cord for.
Yeah, that's the thing is, I think that you said about the extension cord is would be a greater.
That would be.
Issue.
Yeah, exactly.
Someone will do that.
Okay, if I move to the next, we can voice that one.
Well, not really the next, it's kind of, this is for redevelopment. So it's the new storage, where possible, based on existing building layout, developers shall provide long-term storage. Had a mention to house large recreational equipment such as bicycles and kayaks.
Why are the words different?
Why are the words different?
It's for the conversion.
Yeah.
Of an existing building and so the requirements of the multifamily zone are less for the conversion because the building already exists.
Right, okay, so we don't say 12-foot kayaks, we just say.
You can have a 10-foot kayak.
Right, it's like.
Well, it's an example.
Yeah, but why?
Such as, so you're right, it should be the same as the other.
Should be the same.
And I actually would prefer not having the dimension in there because 12 feet is a big space.
Yeah, I really think they can figure it out.
Like bicycles and kayaks and get rid of the 12.
On both, yeah.
Yeah. Because maybe your kayak, you can diagonally or something, get a 14.
What, um, why do we say where possible or what, that, I guess, is it necessary to say where possible? Could it just read based on existing building layout?
You know, it's the same language as some of these other requirements, that's why.
All right.
If you look at recreation space.
I just, I guess it, for me, when I read it and I thought where possible in the beginning, it kind of sounded like this is your, you know, it's not possible, right? And then you just, that's it.
Sounded optional, right?
Yeah.
But then that's, that's a case where we would say, it looks possible to us.
Well, but.
It's like the building that they converted or are converting for apartments on Plaquonik Road that was the school.
Right.
And a gas station before that. They, they don't have, probably don't have a basement in the addition, so it wouldn't be possible.
Right.
So if we want that use in there, then we have to let it go.
All right, it just, I guess it was the placement of it, even I, when I read it, I thought even if there were possible at the end of that, you know, sentence, it would read more, but it's, it, whatever, and then how much I wrote here, so. Oh, it's just going to be able to accommodate a bicycle, it's not worth, that's why I was asking, because it didn't.
Right.
Okay, sometimes I write notes and then I don't know what I'm talking about.
I assume the comments from the earlier language change would apply here though, that we wanted to be accessible to the storage area that is electric or an outlet.
Yeah.
Yes, they should be the same.
Yeah.
That's the. And it's, is it all units now or 50%?
50% still.
Okay.
Well, this is long-term storage, right?
Yes.
Well, both are long-term.
Yeah, but one of them sounded more like when I read the first. This is, I was thinking that that is, are those individual, if first storage laundry, is, are those supposed to be like individual closets?
So people have satisfied this requirement a number of ways, you know, they've had storage units in the basement. There are some that have provided storage units out in a common hallway and others that have actually put them inside the units. So we let the architect.
No, that's fine, and that's probably the best way to do it.
Yeah.
But are these, I guess my question is, is the storage laundry number one separate from the storage number nine? Are they two different storage spaces or are they?
This is a conversion.
That's a conversion.
Right.
Okay.
Right, there are two separate sections.
Yeah, but the, the end result should be the same.
It is, but it's a question. I guess that, I guess that and then, so let's use that, the one that we just did, the hotel conversion. And they provided a nice big room, that seemed great, perfect, right? But then if that were a new facility, what would it look like then?
They would have to do it, okay, since that's a conversion, they fall under the conversion regs, which is where possible.
Okay.
Yeah, more purple, but then to get back to this laundry facility thing, under conversion, you specify, you have to have washer dryer set for every 10 dwelling units, but you don't do that for initial now the new construction. Would that be a minimum? Why, why is that different? The conversion should be more liberal or less demanding than the original one.
Yeah, I see what you're saying because there's a 50. It's one for every 10 and there's no standard on the multi-unit dwellings that are, that are.
Aren't they in every unit?
They are, but it says you can put in every unit or in a common onsite facility.
Oh.
So, so maybe we want to specify how money.
At least that, as a minimum.
Yep, yep.
I think most of them are always in the unit.
They are.
I thought that was required.
You can have a lot of.
It sure is convenient.
Again, just to tighten up the similarity between the two, are we talking 50% for the conversions? Shall have the recreation space or is it just where possible?
Just where possible for conversions.
So if one, if they can only provide space for one, that's okay.
Yeah.
And we're good with that.
If you're good with that.
One bicycle.
If you're good with that, one storage, it's.
If we agree, that's all we can say.
Exactly.
Do we have any recourse?
No, I mean, you can, yeah.
Yeah.
It's like, well, we think it's possible, you can do five.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Fine. Yeah, I guess that's what my how much meant, that's what I was, okay, now it makes sense, sorry. All right.
Okay, now to get even more confusing, so this is, um, this isn't any change over last time, and I'm totally just. Okay, I'm just putting it back on the table. But it's changing the, without fixed regulation for public assembly areas that they would have in a minimum situation, they'd have one space for every 48 square feet of patron floor area. And a maximum, they have one space for every 36 square feet of patron floor area. And that came from the calculation that was based on previous decisions and other.
Okay, oh, these were the smart.
So.
Right, so there's no change from the last time.
No changes. And then same under 15.
It, it's confusing as to what you're changing under this public assembly area. That one space for every 48 square feet of patron or area goes in both of the, the columns.
No, for maximum, it's one space for every 36 square feet.
Yeah, but then it says without fixed seats.
Without fixed seats, correct. I know that editing.
And what goes on there? You just deleted?
No, the one above.
The other one, this one slots right down.
Oh.
Yeah, it was hard to do it on the table.
I guess I'm not sure.
Yep, thank you. We will be caning our editing. All right, the next one was under commercial and public recreation, we want outdoors. Under indoor commercial recreation, there would be one space for every 48 square feet of floor area, just like we talked about for the public assen- assembly in the previous section. And then for maximum, there would be one space for every 36 square feet of patron corner, same again as of the previous. Moving down a little there, your other outdoor recreation, we've changed from one space per 1,000 square feet of lot area to one space for 100 square feet of lot area, I apologize, editing is a little funky there, should be the same for both columns or minimum. And these were both decided on the last meeting as well, so shouldn't be any decisions necessary. And then lot was changed to area proposed for recreational development. Rather than the entire lot being, just the area proposed for development. Now we're on to the charging. The changes that were required on the law for climate change and air quality, so the charging level number six is changing slightly to read required EV char, EV parking spaces for all uses shall be equipped with a level two or direct current fast charging station connection. I don't know what happened, that should be crossed out. Charging station connection, parking spaces for non-residential.
Something that's missing. Should specify how many? There wasn't something in the state statute.
Yeah, that, this, yeah, the state law requires that if you have, if your parking lot has more than 30 spaces, this applies.
You have to have so many.
You have to have. Right, but, but since you require EV parking stalls anyway, and, and don't set the, the, the baseline at 30 spaces, we were just going to change it to meet the state statute.
That's what, I mean, it's missing some words.
Right, yeah.
That's.
Yeah.
So you're going to just do, or put in the state requirement for commercial.
Right.
Any charging station goes up, it has to be level two.
We think it should read required EV spaces for all uses shall be equipped with a level two direct current charging station connection, period.
Yeah, I think you're right, so not all that got crossed out.
Something that you crossed out there.
Yeah, so that, just that spaces for non-residential should go away as well.
Yeah, that's. Yep, yep.
All right. Yeah, this is just a level, so you can't use level four.
Are we catching up with the state or is the state catching up with us?
Um, both maybe, because the state did not require towns to require EV parking, so.
Okay, that's good, we're good. I am.
It's just one question, is there an analogous place in the, in the regs? Because we, I think, had in provisions for putting in, if you don't put in the charging stations, you have to put in the.
Make ready.
Make ready. Those words have to be changed.
The state didn't address that. Um, but we do.
But we, yeah, and actually.
Somewhere.
We wanted to add.
That's not, yeah, but that's not a definition.
Make ready?
It's, no, it's a description, you want to specify in the description where it calls out that you have to have a make-ready situation, what is, what does make-ready mean?
And then we have a definition for make-ready.
It doesn't make any sense.
To what?
It's gibberish, it doesn't specify what you are putting in. It does, you should not put a definition in, you're putting.
Just put it in, put it in the body of the requirement.
Right.
Talking about.
Of what you want, and that's not very clear. And I think it's all, you, all you want to put in is either the cable or conduit install cable, so you don't have to excavate the area, that's what you want to put in here in the requirement and you.
Put this in the body, oh, well, I think the thing is that when we, we had some questions about what make-ready.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's what you want to specify.
Yeah, so I think.
Make-ready is to do something and be specific.
Where, where we put it.
It's only to put in the cabling or ability to put cabling in, so you don't have to excavate the parking lot.
Right.
So. Just put in, and you have to have an outlet.
Yeah, but we also have it in it, there's, it's, it's not, it's the excavation, but it's also to have the capacity. Yeah, the electrical capacity.
You don't have to do, you can do that anytime.
It can, it can be held to do it at any time.
Oh, when you want it, when the requirement comes in, to put the system in place, then you, at that time.
This shouldn't have to.
Remove your service panel and put in a new service panel. Yes, yes, you should at that time, why are you just putting it in and you may never use it? The only reason for doing make-ready is. The only reason for doing make ready is so you don't have to dig up the parking lot.
Meter and service panel. I thought we were saying that the reason to make, that was, that was one of the reasons, the other one was to would not be this this huge challenge. To put these in.
But if you put it in in ten years from now, the requirements could be quite different, the hardware could be.
Everything could be different, you might not need any of this, but. Well, yes, right now, our guess right now is, oh, but we're not even saying you need to put in a cable, we just want a conduit.
Yeah, which is best way to do it.
But if the trunk line to the to the building isn't adequate. Then then what are you going to do?
Well, they'll have to install if, well, what gets them to say they gotta put it in. After the fact, I mean. When you, if it's not going to be put in for ten years, what's the trigger to put it in?
Tara, where did we get this definition? That you have here?
That is from.
Because make, um, I don't mean to interrupt, but make ready was when we had it and you have it here, it's in quotes. And so that to me.
Data Connecticut guidebook, so make ready definition is from the state of Connecticut's. Um, electrical charging.
And is this what they, this is what they have?
Correct.
I'm not, I don't, I don't know if it is or not. Well, that's, I mean, I, that if we're gonna do this, we should probably follow the state's lead if they're gonna.
But how much do you want to just put in for no use? I mean, you gotta have, know what you're doing. And either making it happen now. Or.
Local.
Or you want to make it easy.
Upgrades between the local substation transformer.
Yeah, what is?
Well, that means that you have to have enough. Uh, you, what's coming into the building has to be enough to.
Right. It's. Except then it's the average.
Correct, but one thing that having this in there would allow us to do is if somebody comes back. Five years from now. And hasn't provided enough average, but they did put a. A piece of conduit in, so it says, well, you can put that in, this is, well, yeah, but that will cost me a gazillion dollars. To run a whole line out to my structure, that's, that's too much of a burden. And the answer is no. You shouldn't do that. It's not a burden because we already had it in.
How do you know how many cars, how many stations you want?
They could stand.
In ten years, if everybody has an electric car. You're gonna need a lot more than what the regs would say today. On number of spaces.
Twenty five percent, well, this says twenty five percent.
Yeah, but. Came out of the thing you're sitting on.
Yeah, I understand. But there was, you have to make a stand on it.
Oh, can I just circle back to my, my point was that make ready right now does not specify that it's a level two charge. So make ready for level two. That in itself is going to be two, you know, two twenty and, you know. Which is different from level one.
Yeah, one ten would take a week to charge. Yeah, so you don't want to.
What do we got out here? What is it?
Most of the places are two twenty.
Yeah, this one.
Not fast. I don't know what they are, but they're not fast.
The thing, the critical thing with this stuff is, is to have that. I mean, you're putting a PVC pipe in the ground and then you're pulling a wire through it.
A cable.
Cable.
Well, it's gonna be, it's gonna be.
But that's the, that's the hard part, the cable isn't the hard part.
No, it's, yeah.
It really isn't, it's just getting that piping, but you do want to have. Yeah, you want, you want to have adequate. At least, at least for some, and this allows for, for some, for at least twenty five. Do the math on that, I need two twenty or twenty five percent of my parking spaces. Make sure you got.
Does level two require a certain amperage or is it just voltage?
I think it's average too. I don't know.
Level two is two hundred four, two, up to two hundred forty volt alternating current.
Yeah, that's what you have for running your dryer, your oven, all that stuff. In your house. But it doesn't say how, what the amperage is.
Well, it's probably forty or fifty amp breakers, whatever, I mean, it's not.
I don't know.
Well, it's not. Yeah, it's gonna be the same. Some of those are actually going down.
What's that?
I I know my, I just put a range in and it was like twenty amps or something, it was like really.
Really?
I mean, the thing is that these.
They're more efficient.
Different ones, they cycle, but, um, but the cars probably going to stay somewhere close. And if it does get more efficient, then great, as we get up to fifty percent of the parking spaces, then the efficiency will help out that capacity. But for starting out, want them to start out something.
It makes it easy. Well, then why don't you just specify, put in the, in the electric charging stations now? And we put the whole thing.
Well, we respect the idea that charging stations will dramatically change. Over the years, but not power. It'll still be AC power.
Or DC.
Well, they say AC fed to, that's what's coming to the house. That's not going to change. And we know it's going to be more than driving our LED light bulbs.
Well, why not just tell them to put everything in, but. And put it in, the whole works now.
Because we're saying that the technology will change, the only thing that won't change is the amount of power. Upgrading your panel too isn't like a big, I mean, unless you have to go. And it's not a big pull.
No, it's not.
And I would always, I mean, I mean, for me, I would say, if you can, if you have the room, always put in the bigger. Panel, because, you know, we, and there's no shortage of things that we're gonna need electrical.
Well, we, we are going, what size?
Just this year, what make ready is. I'm not arguing.
Fast charging systems, forty kilowatts or greater. And times twenty five percent of the parking spaces, yeah, do the math and that's how many.
That's the power we're saying.
That's the power requirement you got, you gotta put up a, you know, a hundred amp panel, you gotta put up a two hundred amp panel, whatever it is. It says, and this includes service connection upgrades. So it's like if you have an outhouse or, uh, you know, an outbuilding on your property, you put, usually put in a little sub pad. You run a table saw out there, you know, you put in a two hundred amp breaker.
Yeah, I, I mean, it seems like some of this stuff, I don't, you know. I mean, having the tran- like the what you're running between the transformer. And that's the, and the building.
That's the power.
Should probably be.
It's the power company, you're not doing make ready for that.
Correct.
It's only.
They don't even charge for that.
Play the policies. So if you want to just say you're gonna have the ability to put in so much power for.
Do that, have the ability to to add that much. They have a, they have a little closet, that's the electrical closet and it's packed in there, now we say, great, you're running another. Gazillion kilowatts put in there, and he said, well, I don't know where to put that. Say, well, you should have known where to put that, as far as we have a regulation, if it says you must provide for you. So maybe you're right, maybe we don't need to add the bigger panel.
Those panels aren't that big.
No, they're not. It's just not a, I think it's a, it's a, not a big deal.
I think the, the make ready part is so you don't have to do a lot of digging. Stuff.
One thing is you don't do a lot of different work, so people will tend to do it, we want. Yeah, and so that maybe they'll do it on their own without us demanding, right, that's the thing that I would like to see. Trying to. Do some. Social change here, is what we're kind of promoting.
We want to make it easy, you want to make it simple, put it in.
Do that upgrade.
Yeah, and the hardest part is probably the excavation.
That might be the hardest part.
Because it's gonna be spread out.
That's hard, that's really hard part.
Yeah, and you gotta have it identified where it comes out.
Correct.
We don't want to have it buried. You have to have a cap or something there.
No, that's, they just.
Shows where it is.
They just close it and leave it.
Yeah, you gotta do that much, that's what you really want to do, right?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know, I, I could agree with it, both of you. But I don't think it's a big pull to put the service in now. I don't think, I think, I'm, I'm agreeing, I mean, I think it's not, you're not asking.
Well, then we ought to say, put the service in, except for the outlet part.
That's it.
Oh, absolutely.
If you want to say that's make ready, fine.
It's pretty much.
I don't have a problem with putting it. Just the words that are here are so fuzzy and they don't need much.
Service connections upgrades between the local substation and the transformer, so that's from the pole to the building.
No, the transformer comes before the pole. Well, you have some transfers, you actually have big transfers in the substation.
And they'll be.
And you have the four forty. The two twenty ones on your, somewhere along your street. So it's not clear when they're talking about what transformers. So why not just put it? Put everything in except for the actual. I don't know how you describe. But the actual.
Includes service connection upgrades. To supply. The infrastructure, just maybe just. I don't know. I, I think if this is the state. I think it might sound gibberish, but I think it might cover it.
Oh, but you, just telling to put, put it in so you can, all you have to do is, what do they call the, the unit? That actually, the distribution.
The charger.
Charging.
Well, we're saying the charger and maybe whatever wire it then needs.
Yeah.
And maybe even that point, and the breaker that it needs, you don't have to put any of those things in yet, but. At least the rest, the rest of the stuff you can pick up at Home Depot.
Yeah.
Kind of level.
That's all it is, yeah.
That clear?
You know, just the hardware and install it. I mean, just installation, you know, of of the infrastructure.
Yeah, everything must be in place.
So I think that's the language we have.
Yeah.
Not, not the definition, but I think it's in the regulation already.
So except for, yeah.
Yeah, oh, I see what you're saying, but it's just like, I think what, I mean, what we're doing is just because we had this question about make ready.
Right.
What does that mean?
Right.
And I think that this is telling us, if there's any doubt, this is what make ready means. Everything but the plug.
Right.
Or the appliance. I think that's probably the word to use.
Right.
You know, the charging.
Or the charger, yeah, the charging, yeah, that's good.
Like the box where you plug it in, and don't put that.
Yeah, that box and the thing that would connect into your car.
Tesla things that you see, oh, in Chili's.
But you know what, you don't get a. You'll get a tax credit unless you have a licensed electrician putting that all in, right?
Yeah, oh yeah, you're not doing that. Well, well, we get things a lot.
No, that's okay.
He goes to.
For large development. Yeah.
They're not.
Yeah. Yes.
My hearing is that. Um, the board is comfortable with the two level language. Change. But the make ready standards language.
The make ready.
Could be edited.
It should be deleted and they put in their farm.
So. Delete the definition. And include those requirements.
That's what I.
Already have a.
That makes sense, because we don't need, you don't need to, that's fine, that's a better.
I also do have some other definitions on the screen.
Yeah, those are fine.
Are those okay?
Yeah.
Well, that was difficult to follow remotely.
Keep up, Kevin.
I, I'm trying, I'm working on that.
Overload your data server.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
But that was charging level, so now we're going to move on to. A small change to the eight point two dash seventeen bicycle parking. Um, and that's just a change that is within residential multi-unit mixed-use zoning district. Um, and that was just a typo on the last.
That's fine, um, I had a question of, because what initially got me all going on all this stuff? Was the minimum space required? And I, and I'm sort of, I think that we've sort of like alleviated all the problems with.
I think so.
Your stuff.
I think so, I think so, and then. Um, you know, an, an outdoor bicycle parking space isn't just one bicycle, you know, somebody puts in a rack.
Yeah.
You know, to.
So for me, I mean.
Yeah.
And it was what, what triggered me initially on this was that. Because it didn't, it was, uh. It was related to. Automobile parking.
Right.
Which didn't make a lot of sense.
Right.
But I'm okay with it, I.
I, I think this.
Let's just.
Cause who, I, I think as you guys have said in the past, I mean, who's going to use the outdoor bicycle racks?
Well, they're transients, right?
Right, exactly, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and I think.
And then probably not with anybody.
I think we've provided so much bicycle stuff elsewhere, it's just. So I'm, I didn't want you to think I forgot.
No, I knew you did. I knew that.
That's it.
And then the, the edit on internal facilities, so it would have multi-un- multi-unit residential uses of five or more units. And professional office uses may provide the required bicycle parking facilities within internal enclosed or secured facility. Easily accessible to all buildings. So that was a, instead of putting in the outlet.
Number was that one?
That was eight point two dash seventeen. Now on to ADU.
Sure, sure, I mean, there, there were no changes to what we looked at last time, I just wanted to confirm. That you're good, that we prepare an application to change the regulations, um, and. This will meet the state statute that is already in effect, so as of January one, it was a thousand square feet because you guys decided not to offer. Okay, and this will just put it in our regs. Great.
In the parking.
Right, yes, in the parking is.
Part of that.
That's right, that's right. So we'll probably prepare, um, an application for this separate from the other, because it sounds like there's still a little bit more tweaking to, to do on that.
I, I just had one, because when I see, because we've had so many problems with the short-term rentals, with these words, and when I see dwelling unit. I. I, I think that we need to make sure, I mean, I'm fine with this.
Okay.
But that our zoning official had. Different ideas than what we had of what dwelling and dwelling units were. I just want to make sure when we get to the short-term rentals that we have that conversation again. Kind of make it as clear as we can. That's it.
Okay, great.
So what else had on the changes?
Uh, it sounds like a couple, couple more edits on the, on the next one, then. Storage.
Storage will pay on an EV, some of the numbers for.
Yep.
Parking. And then some of the edits on.
So should you just? When we get done with the ads, just put it on the future agenda.
Absolutely.
To look at.
Right, absolutely.
Discussion. On it, just to make sure they're all.
Right, right, but I will go ahead and prepare an application for the ADU.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Is, is there an easy way, do, do we use the term make ready in more than one spot? Okay, it's just in the one spot, good. Good.
One paragraph.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, that's important, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, if we used it in other places, I didn't.
No, then you don't need a definition, or put it right there, perfect.
Yeah, you want to just put whatever it means. So we're done with the whole business now.
Yes.
Well, if we don't fight out, I can get the thing resolved now, we'll be in trouble later on, so it's better to spend. The time, time on it now, make sure everything's clear. It's too easy to, that's something. Okay, next item, uh, in business, election of officers, we have. Officers, chairperson and vice. Chair secretary.
I would happily nominate Jeff. As chairperson, and pal as secretary.
Oh, second.
Does anyone have? Anyone else?
Oh, just a, a point of clarification, am I, am I, I know when I can vote, do I vote on this or not?
No, you're only members.
I, thank you.
So you can't, you can't. So you can't, you can't get yourself in trouble.
That, that was my secondary reason, Jeff.
Why, you wanna volunteer?
I'm fine, you're doing a great job.
Does anyone have any other? Chair and the vice chairman secretary, all those in favor of saying I? Any opposed, any abstentions, motions carried now? And who applications? We have a flyer to.
Right. Right, a season room in the courtyard at twelve Water Street Factory Square.
Where is this right behind?
It is, it's where he's, um, already expanded the patio.
It's the patio, they're gonna enclose that.
Yep, a portion of it. Portion of it.
This isn't, right now they have an area enclosed kind of in the back corner, is that a, not it?
Right, and this is more permanent, yeah.
I'll make the ten.
Yep, um, in addition to that.
Mess up, what's supposed to be there for open space?
No, it's on top of a portion of the patio that's already approved for seating.
But not enclosed.
Correct.
Oh, okay, because it's already designated.
Right, it's exactly, yeah, exactly. Um, in addition, we also received an application for a two lot subdivision on River Road.
Which part or is that?
It, the far northern part.
All the way up toward the.
Towards Old Mystic.
Old Mystic.
Yep, yep.
Aren't those, um, usually just free splits?
They already took a free split.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
In referrals, we have the Storington referral. On the Seaport, I assume you have no comment on that? You don't have to submit anything on it, just have no comment. Actually, it's good, we'll eat some of the traffic and parking. I've got a lot of people like taking the, taking a launch down there.
I think quite a few people already walk.
They do.
Not that bad a walk, and it's actually a really pleasant walk once they've done it, so I think it's already worked.
No, putting in that little park thing there. Well, no, and it goes right down along the river.
Right.
But you see people walking, a lot of people walk all the way up to the hotel area.
They do.
It's interesting to see that. Commission, uh, reports, you reported chair. Do have our workshop next Tuesday, six o'clock, I assume.
That's correct.
In the big room. And we'll get out something in time, so everybody. We're gonna do short-term rentals.
Short-term rentals will be on first, so we will resend what we've been sending for the last two or three workshops that you've never gotten to. Um, in addition, um, I do have some revisions for data centers that I will send to you. Um, I think I'm, I'm gonna, you had asked that just be sent so that you could review it. So I'm gonna send that to you folks tomorrow and we'll post it on Greater Groton, so the public also has the opportunity to see it.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
So do you want us to try to, if there's time?
If there's time, it'll be on the agenda, so if there's time.
And what's the latest we can submit that for, get it into the circuit for re, public hearing and all that stuff?
Oh, right, um. So, so the moratorium expires in July. So it's generally a two to three months.
Oh, okay, we're.
We're still okay. If we get to the end of February, March, that's.
We've gotta have it by then, so we wanna have it.
Right. Either that or we need to extend the moratorium.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, we, we should be pretty close.
I think so, I think so.
Is extending a moratorium uh, difficult to start from scratch again?
It's a text amendment.
It's a text, so you have another public hearing and all that kind of.
All of that, yeah, all of that. Following along other regulations, cannabis, um, I've just gotten back, um, some comments from the town attorney that I need to go through, um, and get that to you as well.
But that's not a timeline.
No, that's correct.
Okay, good.
All right. So that's all I have. Does anyone in the commission have any?
If I could offer something, when the meeting ends, if I could just take a minute and just give some remote feedback as far as audio and video, I'd appreciate it.
Oh, yes.
I, when the camera is. It's not. When the camera is on, okay. Okay, good.
Well, do you wanna do it with a cam?
No, 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 no. We found that when the camera is on, folks who are remote have a hard time hearing.
Oh, no, I know, yes. That's what that thing came.
Yep. Yep. Okay.
I do have something like.
Uh, you know what, I think I did, I wanted to just say some things or ask some questions about the data centers, but I'm gonna wait until I get what.
Okay.
See, and, and it's, can I just like, if I have some questions, can I just?
Let me know.
Send them to you and then get them just so that, okay?
Absolutely.
Just some things that I saw that I was wondering about. Perfect, that's all.
Does anyone else have anything, not important staff?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. All right, so we've talked about the data centers. Um, uh, I wanted to let you know the Conservation Commission is scheduling a special meeting to start working on the open space portion of the plan of conservation and development, um, basically in anticipation of you know, hiring a consultant in the next year or so, they're, they're getting started on it now, so. Um. And I think they're just using what is in the current P O C D and thinking or revise that. I'm not sure that I, I have no idea what the format's gonna be of the next one, but they're gonna get their thoughts together at any.
That's good.
Yep, yep. Um, and then I had, um, an email from Desegregate Connecticut, who they're interested in doing a presentation, um, to you for their new proposal, a statewide proposal called Work, Live, Ride. Um, it's some kind of state assistance for local municipalities to build more homes near public transportation. So I can schedule that for when we don't have a public hearing. Right, okay.
Is it a state organization? Is it a private organization and nonprofit?
It's a private organization. They've been doing a lot of work on affordable housing. I think they were one of the driving forces between the twenty twenty-one uh, behind the twenty twenty-one revisions, um, sort of pushing affordable housing, um, and having communities provide their fair share.
Oh, thank you.
Ten percent.
That, and I mean, they, you know, the accessory dwelling unit changes, that was one of their initiatives, yeah.
Well, it'd be good for the P O C D.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Cause I.[1743.84]